I'll give him a call too.
Not enough desk space here.
Okay, it is seven o'clock. Looks like we're on air. I'm going to call a special meeting of the Board of Alderman to order on Tuesday, June 8, 2021 at 7:00 PM via Zoom teleconference. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Lovering and Alderman O'Brien will lead us in the Pledge to the Flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us up with the Spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be always for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As President of the Board of Alderman, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to me electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. To access Zoom, please refer to the agenda of the city's website for the meeting link. To join by phone, dial 1-929-205-6099. Meeting ID is 856-5276-5191. The passcode is 319715. The public may also view the meeting via Channel 16. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashua's website and publicly noticed at City Hall and the Nashua Public Library. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call 603-589-3329 and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes taken during the meeting will be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Madam Clerk.
Alderman O'Brien.
I am present and I'm currently in the chamber.
Alderman Cleve.
I am present and also in the chamber.
Alderman Kelly. Alderman Dow.
Yes, I'm present and I'm in the chamber.
Alderman Karen.
I am present and I am in the chamber.
Alderman Clemmons.
I am here, I'm at home, participating electronically. I'm in a room, there's no one here with me and I can hear everything.
Alderman Lopez.
I'm here, I'm at home, I changed my background so people won't be confused about me being in the chamber, and there's nobody with me, I can hear and see everything. Thanks.
Alderman Tenzel.
I am present, I am logging in electronically, I can hear and see everybody and there's no one in the room with me.
Alderman Lou.
I'm home alone and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Jettie.
I'm home alone and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Schmidt.
I am present, at home, alone and can hear everyone.
Alderman Loz.
I'm here, I'm at home, I'm alone and I can hear.
Alderman Cleaver.
I'm present, I'm safer at home and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Herod Gaffrey.
I'm present, I'm alone in this room and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Wilshire.
I am here in the chamber.
You have 14 in attendance.
Thank you. Also with us this evening is Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton and Emergency Management Director Justin Cates. Tonight's special meeting is for an Emergency Operations Plan, a presentation by Director Cates, so I'm going to turn it over to him.
Thank you very much, President Wilshire, I'm going to share my screen here. Okay, does everybody see the screen okay?
Yes.
Perfect, all right. So, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to do an overview of the 2021 Emergency Operations Plan update, and this is something that we actually planned to have, this is the 2020 Emergency Operations Plan update. It was planned to be released last year, around the same time, and unfortunately due to COVID, it put us a year behind. So there were some challenges with that, but there's also some benefits that we'll talk about a little bit later. So, the goal here is to just give everybody an overview of what this document is and offer an opportunity for you to ask questions about the city's emergency plans, the processes that we use for a variety of sizes of types of emergencies, and where we're headed in the future. So what is the Emergency Operations Plan? There's a couple of key things that it's really meant to do, the first being giving a high-level overview of what the responsibilities are of the various city divisions and departments, and what they're required to do during an emergency response or long-term recovery. So as an example, it identifies what key activities the fire department would be responsible for during an emergency, or the Public Works Division. So it goes through those types of things, and I'll go into more specifics about how that is outlined in this plan. The second thing that it does is it talks about how we receive assistance from others, whether it be from the state, or whether it be from the federal government, and how that assistance is...
Justin, we can't hear you. Director Cates?
His image is frozen on Zoom, I think he's been disconnected.
Yeah, I think it's frozen, it probably died like that.
He's back in there.
He's back now. Let me just move to another spot, I think my Wi-Fi is just not in a great spot here, stand by one second. I'm not going to miss this. All right, let's try this again. I'm hopefully in a better spot with Wi-Fi, it looks like on my signal it looks good. Let me share my screen again here. All right, everybody see the screen again?
Yes.
Excellent, all right, I apologize for that. Internet connectivity is a critical thing in remote meetings. So, the second bullet here, we talk about emergency assistance, and the idea there is how do we receive assistance from the state, or how do we receive assistance from the federal government, and what's the process for receiving that assistance? What's the trigger for us requesting assistance when we're in a situation where we need additional assistance beyond what we're capable of doing within the city? The plan also covers the procedures and processes that we use to manage emergencies of all sizes within the city. And so, one of the key things that this does is it talks about the difference between what we would say is routine operations, the way that we operate in the city day-to-day. When people call 911, they get assistance from the fire department, or the police department, or emergency medical services, or in other cases, they might receive some sort of assistance from Public Works. And those are routine operations, we provide service every day here within the city. But what does that shift to an emergency operations type of scenario, when there's additional coordination that's necessary between city departments, when there's coordination that's needed between other entities outside of the city, whether it be the state, local businesses, the nonprofits within the community? And it also talks about how we will engage the rest of the population during that type of an emergency situation as well, primarily through two areas, the first being emergency notifications, how do we let others know that there's some sort of an emergency situation? But also, public information, how do we keep people informed during an emergency with information as to what they should be doing, what we want them to do during an emergency, and all of that. The next item that it covers is coordinating instructions for mutual aid. And mutual aid, you might be familiar with the term, from the perspective of fire and police, they provide mutual aid on a very routine basis, going to neighboring communities to provide assistance. The same concept applies in emergency management as well, where we may share resources with neighboring communities, or other communities may share resources with us. And primarily, it's been really the other way around, we've primarily shared resources with other communities just because of the amount of equipment, supplies, and staff that we have here in the city. And then the final key area that it goes through is what we call logistical support. So for every type of emergency action that we do, whether it be putting out a fire, or opening up a shelter, or calling for an evacuation, each one of those things requires a substantial amount of logistical support, whether it be supplies and equipment, staffing, communications, feeding, all the things that are necessary for our personnel to be able to do whatever the action is that we're asking them to do. So our office in Nashua, it uses a process called comprehensive emergency management, and this Emergency Operations Plan that we're referring to here is, it follows this model of comprehensive emergency management. It's originated in 1979 through a report that the National Governors Association created, which reorganized the way that emergency management was done within the country. Prior to that, it had been historically done as what was called civil defense, and much more focused towards, you know, some sort of an attack from the USSR at the time, and it didn't really cover the types of hazards that we see primarily today, things like flooding and weather-related hazards. So comprehensive emergency management, it focuses on three areas, the first being all phases of emergency management. So as an example, you'll see in the chart on the screen, there's four phases of emergency management, mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery. Mitigation being the reduction of risk within a community, things like infrastructure projects and building codes, things to try and reduce the impacts of emergencies. Preparedness, which is getting all of our city departments, but also our citizens and businesses, prepared for emergency situations. Then we consider sort of that break between pre-disaster situations and post-disaster situations, and we move into the response phase, which is what people think about typically when it comes to emergency management, getting everybody together, coordinating that emergency response, and trying to save lives and property and the environment. And then finally, long-term recovery, which is trying to get the community back up and running to as best as possible, hopefully better than it was before, and we're sort of in that phase right now when it comes to COVID. The other thing that comprehensive emergency management does, it focuses on something called all actors, and so historically, emergency management, prior to it becoming emergency management, was very much focused on government being the lead, predominantly the federal government being the lead on emergency situations. And that's why unfortunately today, we have kind of this misperception of who's really going to come and save the day during an emergency, and people think, oh, well FEMA's just going to show up and save the day, when that's not really the case. All emergencies start locally, and there's a responsibility of those local communities to have some capabilities to be able to handle whatever the emergency situations. So all actors refers to working to engage all levels of government, the nonprofit sector, organizations like your local faith-based communities, your Red Cross, Salvation Army, you know, many of the other social organizations within the community, but also businesses, both large and small, that have capabilities to provide. And we've seen in large-scale disasters where local businesses, you know, small downtown businesses can help to get the community back up and running after a crisis, and we've also seen the same for large, big-box retailers, which provide lots of resources into a jurisdiction during a crisis as well. So, those are all the types of folks that need to be involved in an emergency management plan like this. And the final section is all hazards and threats. Again, we don't want to focus around one specific hazard or threat in our program, and historically, we've done a really poor job of that as a country. We originally were concerned about an attack from the USSR, and then that focused towards natural hazards, and then we had 9/11, which focused us towards terrorism, and then Hurricane Katrina happened, and, you know, we shifted back towards hurricanes as our primary concern. But, you know, every time we shift like that, we leave other hazards and threats behind where we need to actually be paying attention to them as well. So how does this Emergency Operations Plan align to other plans either that the city or that the state have? Well, the first, I think, important connection is to the city's Hazard Mitigation Plan. And as I mentioned in our last slide, there are four phases, one being mitigation, which is the reduction of risk within the community. The Board of Alderman and the mayor had approved the updated Hazard Mitigation Plan two years ago, so we're currently with an up-to-date Hazard Mitigation Plan within the community. But the key connection here is that that plan focuses on those risk reduction and pre-disaster recovery types of plans, whereas the Emergency Operations Plan focuses really on the short-term recovery, as well as the emergency response phases. So ultimately, we have to ensure that both of them kind of work together and are aligned so that our whole emergency management program is effective. There are also plans at the state that this coordinates with predominantly, the State Emergency Operations Plan, one of the things that you'll see is the connection between our request for emergency assistance from the state, and how that aligns to the processes that the State Emergency Operations Center has established as well. And then finally, there's a very similar plan as well at the federal level, called the National Response Framework, and the same thing, it's about FEMA's role, as well as other federal agencies' role within the emergency management program, how we will request assistance from them as well.
If you ask down and stop, I got something too, sit down!
Maybe that person's not on mute, whoever that is. So, update considerations, so some of the things that we look at when it comes to the update of the Emergency Operations Plan are, one, you know, we want to review this document yearly and identify if there's any changes that are needed. But we also want to ensure that we review it and make any updates after an incident. So COVID being a good example of this, we really want to make sure that we incorporate any necessary changes as we move into the future updates of this document. But if there's no updates that happen on a yearly basis because there hasn't been an incident or no significant changes, the goal is to really go through a comprehensive process every four years, and that's what we were doing last year and what we've continued on with this year. There's a standard, or I wouldn't say a standard, but guidance that's been created by the Federal Emergency Management Agency called CPG 101, the Comprehensive Preparedness Guide, and it has a methodology for how you're supposed to go through this planning process and ensure that it's inclusive and that it covers all the necessary components that are necessary during an emergency. Then, when the plan is completed, it's promulgated by the mayor, the mayor signs off on this as a completed and approved plan for the city, and it's essential that it's been signed off by the chief executive of the city, because most homeland security funding really requires this plan to be approved by the city and up-to-date. So as an example, if the police department's going after some homeland security funding, or the fire department is doing the same, one of the things that they'll be asked as they go through the application process is, when was the last time that this Emergency Operations Plan was updated? The National Incident Management System is another key topic that we wanted to include tonight, and the reason for this is, this was implemented significantly after 9/11, based on the sort of the failures that we saw in how our emergency management and public safety system works within this country. And what the country decided to do was bring all of those different disciplines together, fire, police, public health, public works, all those different organizations, together in a standard framework for how incidents are managed. And it was, number one, required for the city to say that they've adopted the National Incident Management System back post-9/11, and to ensure that any of our documents, like this City Emergency Operations Plan, is using the National Incident Management System as its approach for coordinating different departments and other non-city partners. And there are a couple of key aspects to NIMS, one being something called the Incident Command System, it's essentially the way that we establish an organizational structure or hierarchy as to which agencies and departments are doing what, and who's responsible for leading those incidents. It also requires us to coordinate with the variety of agencies, both here within the city, but also at the state level, and it incorporates a concept called Emergency Operations Centers, which are the locations, sort of the nerve center of all emergency activities during a major emergency at any level of government. It also covers some of the key requirements for public information, so information out to the public and businesses, how we coordinate with other agencies that are pushing information out to the public, and how we work with the news media and also social media now to get information out to the community. It also covers resource management, so what's the process for requesting resources from other agencies, whether they be at the state or the federal level? How do we track resources? How do we know when resources are out of service, need to be repaired, need to be rehabilitated, or when we can demobilize them and send them home? It also covers the requirements for training and credentialing responders and staff, the things that are necessary to ensure that our leadership, the people who are responsible for supervising emergency responders are qualified to do so, and that they've had the appropriate training that's needed for that. And then the final thing that it covers in NIMS that's applicable to this specific plan is interoperability and communication systems, making sure that all of our systems that we have that are used to allow public safety to communicate, public health, public works, are able to communicate with each other and not siloed within specific departments or agencies. So this national doctrine really serves as kind of a required effort to try and resolve the issues that were found during 9/11, and you'll see in this Emergency Operations Plan update that there's a lot of language that refers back to our adoption of NIMS. Now, one of the things I had mentioned in one of the earliest slides was that this plan talks about the responsibilities and requirements of different departments, and what we've done is we've used a framework that the federal government has developed called Core Capabilities, and you'll see there are 15 on here, ranging from public information and warning, to law enforcement, to mass care services, which is sheltering and feeding. And what it does is it covers which departments are responsible for these different types of activities, which partners that they will bring in to assist them with this, and that includes businesses and other nonprofit entities, and what essentially are the things that are needed in order to provide these types of services during an emergency. So this is kind of a good way to understand how those things are organized, and our plan covers each one of these. It's also important to note that the plan covers how we activate our city's Emergency Operations Center, so for many of you, you're probably familiar that that's over at the police department in the classroom, and that's where we bring all the city departments together typically during emergency situations. And again, I say typically because during COVID, we actually completely threw this concept out the window and decided to do a virtual Emergency Operations Center instead. Another important thing that this plan talks about is the coordination between public health and emergency management. So many of you probably are aware that the Public Health Division also has emergency management responsibilities, and their focus is on public health emergencies, much like COVID, or a bioterrorism incident, or some sort of an environmental health emergency. And what we've done in this plan is outlined the responsibilities, both for the emergencies that are non-public health in nature, as well as those that are public health-led incidents. And so, in those types of situations where public health takes the lead, emergency management, we provide support to them, and the same goes in the inverse, where those emergencies that are, you know, major storms, those types of things, emergency management takes the lead and public health provides support to us. So the next steps with this specific plan, again, the promulgation by the mayor is the next critical step, where the mayor will sign off on the document to say that the city has adopted it. But also, we use some grant funding from the state, as well as FEMA, to update this document for 2021, and so we'll do a grant closeout and get our reimbursement for the time that was dedicated to updating this document. The other key thing that is going to take place as part of this process is incorporating all the lessons learned and analysis that we've done from the COVID response. We had been doing that over the last probably six or so months, where we've been capturing all the things that we've learned from this incident, and identified what significant changes are needed in order to update this document moving forward. And I wanted to provide kind of a quick overview of some of the key things that we've found, and what we expect to make significant changes to in our document. The first one being virtual emergency operations, as I discussed, rather than having our team members meet at the police department, instead we use a variety of interactive tools to allow people to share information and manage this incident virtually, and we're going to incorporate more of that into our plan. We're also going to further simplify the document, as we found during COVID, many of the things that were outlined in the documents essentially were thrown out the window by either the federal government or by another agency. And so, much of the stuff we had to develop sort of on the fly. So those are things that we'll also look to do, is cut out the very specific procedural information that is likely to shift in the middle of an incident anyway. We're also going to review the types of capabilities the city is not well-suited for, and those are the types of activities that would look at things that would be better regionalized, things like sheltering, or large-scale operations that the city wouldn't really need to do their own process for. And that also ties into public health as well, as we look to see what types of capabilities the state would be responsible for in public health versus the city. We also found during COVID that our resource management processes that were within our plan were also not really leveraged. We had a kind of a traditional approach where the city departments would reach out to the Emergency Operations Center to request a resource, and then if we didn't have it internally within the city, we would make that request to the state, and then the state would make that request to the federal government. And what we found during COVID is everybody was just requesting everything from everybody. And that was not just a City of Nashua thing, that was across the country, and it was because of shortages in resources and the massive amount of involvement that the private sector had in trying to get the right resources during COVID. So that's another thing that will be likely shifting in this next update after the one that we're discussing now. The authorities of the state, we found during the COVID response, that there were a lot of emergency orders, executive orders that were implemented, that we really never even expected we'd have to get to, but those are things that we will want to incorporate as well into our document. We'll want to work with Bobby and the team over at Public Health to ensure that the integration between emergency management and public health is correct as referenced in the plan. And then the final thing that we'll look at is making sure that our continuity of operations planning for the city is sort of the focus and emphasis of our work moving forward. What we found is that the states really stepped in, as well as the federal government, to manage the COVID response, making a lot of what our office and what public health did really supplemental and very specialized towards what the city was doing. However, the state and the federal government didn't really provide any support in planning for continuity of operations for our city departments, and so we will have to, moving forward, really emphasize our work to ensure that everybody from the fire department to information technology to the library have really... have really strong abilities to withstand any sort of a crisis that comes our way. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about the 2021 Emergency Operations Plan Update, and I look forward to working with you on getting this thing completed.
Questions? Alderman Dow.
Yes, Justin, one thing we talked about about a year ago was as we went through the pandemic, developing a playbook if and when it ever happens again. And I think you had said that that's part of your plans, but I just wanted to make sure that that is. And the other thing, one of the big things that sort of crippled us at the beginning of the pandemic, as I recall, our emergency supply of PPE was out of date and basically not good. And I think we talked way back, much like you did in the military. If you had a revolving supply, if you had worked the thing with the hospitals and the public health to supply them with PPE, you keep a major supply here somewhere in Nashua for emergencies. But you give them on a regular basis, you supply it to them and then replace it. So you always have a viable supply of equipment on emergency basis. So you basically set up a supply center to the degree we need for the city. And while I would work with the state, I wouldn't rely on them. But I think that we need to safeguard our own city. So working with Bobby Bagley would be good on that and seeing what we need based on what happened over the past year, how much we need in supply and how to keep it current. Thanks.
Sure. And so regarding the first question about the kind of the continuous improvement stuff, and that's sort of what I was referring to on that last slide. What you saw on that last slide was really the interim findings, the key areas that we realized needed to shift based on the COVID response and what we're going to include as part of the Emergency Operations Plan. For the second question, that is something I'll have to work with Bobby on. And the reason for that is the cache of supplies that the city had for a public health emergency. It's a public health function. So we need to work with the, you know, Bobby's team, obviously. But then also, she has to work closely with the Department of Health and Human Services at the state, as well as the Health and Human Services at the federal level, who provides a lot of the funding for supplies like that. So that will be on the radar, and we're going to have to work with her partners on that.
Any other questions for Director Kates? Alderman Lopez.
Yeah. So can you speak a little bit to the mitigation of avoiding undue or unnecessarily large vulnerable populations? I know we have been working on improving our approaches to local crises, meaning more like block level. If a building starts to burn, that threatens multiple houses, who's in charge of making sure that that is communicated to the houses nearby? Who's in charge of making sure that when there are multiple families displaced, that they're being tracked, that their situations are being addressed? I see that as valuable because having worked with the homeless for years, like probably over a decade, two decades now. Nashua has a large population of people who are more vulnerable to some circumstances than others, whether they're displaced in terms of housing, whether they're newly housed, whether they're lacking financial means, members of economic minorities. Some people are able to handle something like a citywide disaster event with more resilience than others based on economic means. Other people are more able to handle it because they're in physical shape and physical condition, or because they have more connections. So what about preventing the City of Nashua from having an unnecessarily large vulnerable population that would create a liability in the event of a major catastrophe?
Yeah, so there's a lot to unpack on that one. So I'll only hit a couple of the things. So the first item is kind of the mitigation aspect that you had mentioned, trying to identify those vulnerable populations within the community and identifying ways to try and reduce risk for them to be impacted from the start. That's been identified as part of the Hazard Mitigation Plan that the city had done two years ago. However, I'm going to note this. Many of the recommendations and strategies that were identified in that document to deal with sort of reduction of vulnerability for populations, there are social programs and infrastructure investments that are beyond the scope of, you know, like my specific office. There are things like, you know, trying to promote financial literacy within populations that don't have savings accounts and can't withstand some sort of a crisis situation. So all those things you had mentioned are right on. Those are the things that create emergencies. The storm itself doesn't create the emergency. It's the people's, it's the impact to society that really we're most concerned about. Now specifically referencing the plan that we're talking about tonight, the Emergency Operations Plan, there is a section in that document which talks about what we call access and functional needs. These are populations that may require some additional accommodations or assistance during a crisis. And there's a couple of things that we've done. Number one, we've identified the access and functional needs that we're concerned about within the city regarding emergency operations. But number two, we've looked at areas within the city that may have higher levels of population that fall within one of the categories of access functional needs that we would need to consider in things like sheltering or evacuations or things like that. It's not, it's not perfect because we don't have literal addresses for every single person that meets one of those, you know, kind of those criteria. But what we do is we can at least look at like the Census Block Group level and say, okay, well, this area, maybe in the downtown, is an area with, there might be an economic challenge in a certain area or lack of access to transportation. So we know that our strategies for an evacuation in that area need to shift differently than we might in another part of the city. So that's, that's how we deal with the response phase on how to ensure that vulnerable populations are provided accommodations as needed. And I think the key thing that is essential as part of this plan is that, as you had mentioned, in most cases, it's going to be the vulnerable populations that need the assistance, not the rest of the community. We need to focus our efforts on those populations for any sort of a large-scale emergency.
If I can just follow up?
Alderman Lopez.
This is the seven-year anniversary of the fire in West Hollis that took out a pretty significant building. And that impacted this community particularly because it's so densely populated. An emergency in one part of the city isn't necessarily going to be as acute an emergency as it would be if it happened in another area. For example, if there was a flood, we had a flash flood warning today. There was a flood in the downtown area. We probably would see a number of the social services that we would be activating in an emergency compromise themselves, like the soup kitchen, the rescue mission, all those kind of things would be in the flood zone. So that's part of it. But I was also pointing out as Director, sorry, Director Kates acknowledged that there are also large populations that could themselves become an element of the emergency. He had brought up Hurricane Katrina that was characterized by a large number of people who could not be easily evacuated and were not evacuated until it was somewhat late in the game. And then overcrowding in the evacuation result created a secondary impact. So my comments weren't necessarily directed towards Director Kates, but more to give him an opportunity to remind the rest of us on the board that caring for the needy in Nashua, focusing on those in need of things like city welfare and these nonprofit organizations that support them, isn't just an act of charity. It is hazard mitigation, it's making sure we're not too vulnerable to a catastrophe by making sure that our residents have some capabilities of their own, stockpiled independently, that they can use in an emergency. Thank you.
Does anyone else have a question for Director Kates? Seeing no one, thank you, Director Kates. Appreciate your presentation this evening.
Absolutely, thank you.
Alderman O'Brien.
Madam President, we'd like to make a motion that the June 8, 2021 Special Meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You're 14 years and zero days.
That motion carries, and we are adjourned at 7:40 PM. I'm going to go right into our next meeting. I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, June 8, 2021, at 7:40 PM via teleconference. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Lovering, and Alderman Tenza will lead us in the Pledge to the Flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As President of the Board of Aldermen, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. To access Zoom, please refer to the agenda or the city's website for the meeting link. To join by phone, dial 1-929-205-6099. The meeting ID is 856-5276-5191. The passcode is 319715. The public may also view the meeting on Channel 16. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashua's website at NashuaNH.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall and the Nashua Public Library. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call 603-589-3329, and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to no law. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
I am present, and I'm in the chamber.
Alderman Cleve.
I am present, and I'm also in the chamber.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Dow.
Yes, I'm president, and I'm in the chamber.
Alderman Karen.
I am president, and I am in the chamber.
Alderman Clemmons.
I am here, I'm participating at home, I can hear everybody, and no one is in the room with me.
Alderman Lopez.
I'm present, I'm calling in from home, and I am alone, but I can hear and see everybody.
Alderman Tenza.
I am present, I'm participating remotely, I can hear everyone, and no one is in the room with me.
Alderwoman Lou.
I'm home alone, and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Jettie.
I'm home alone, and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Schmidt.
I'm present, alone, and can hear everyone.
Alderman Laws.
I'm here, I can hear everyone, and I am also alone.
Alderman Cleaver.
I'm present, safer at home, and I am alone.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
I am present, I'm in this room alone, and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Wiltshire.
I am here in the chamber.
You're 14 in attendance.
Thank you. Also in attendance this evening is Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, do you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, Madam President, thank you very much. First, there are a few things going on at the state level that I wanted to comment on. As we know, the, well, and it's clear that there are a few things that are going on and that are clearly happening. Some we're still waiting on. The state budget has not yet been finalized, so we don't know some things that may arise as a result of it. For example, will the $7.4 million cut in school aid be reduced to some degree? It might be, but we don't know for sure. But there are certain things that are clear. First of all, the state budget, or the state is, as we've discussed, raising Nashua's pension bill by $4.4 million. Now, this is unrelated to city wages. We now, because the money is being used to bail the state out from a long period of mismanagement of the pension fund. Pension fund itself will tell you, and very clearly if you ask, of the $29 million we're going to be paying, 80% of that is unrelated to the current employees. It's part of the state bailout to pay for the mess, the multi-billion dollar mess that they created. So that's going up $4 million. At the same time, the legislature has now enacted a special bill applying only to Nashua, reinstating the cap, even though it does not comply, is not consistent with the state law that applies to all other cities, because it does not have an override provision. But Madam President, the irony in this is that the budget that I have proposed to you and the Budget Committee under Alderman Dow is now considering it, the budget that I have proposed is up about 2%. Now, we're the cap to apply, and it's not act, this bill doesn't apply until 60 days, so it may not apply to the current budget, but let's just say it did. The cap would be about 1.7%. The budget I proposed is up 2%, a little more than the cap. But the total increase is only $5.7 million, that's about 2%. $4.4 million of that $5.7 million increase is related to the state pension bill. So at the same time that the state is hitting us, making us pay to bail out their problems, they turn around and say, oh, we don't want you to raise your budget. So they raise our costs, and at the same time, try to say that it's the, that the city is raising its budget too much. But you know, Madam President, you know much? The budget would be up, the one I proposed, were it not for the state and their $4.4 million. The actual budget, but for what the state has done with the pensions, would only, is up less than, less than a half a percent. So the irony is, the state hits us, makes the budget go up, and then says there should be a cap on it, as though the city is causing the problem, when in fact, it's caused by state actions, year after year after year. So I just wanted to make sure the board understood that. I want to thank our legislative delegation, especially those that are on the board here, for all of the efforts they have made and they're still making to fight for the city, try to correct some of these things, point out some of these things. But of course, they're in the minority, and they're kind of swimming against the tide. And progress is very difficult. Madam President, I also wanted to mention our 21145, because I think there's some misunderstanding about it. This would, this resolution would use bonded money, money that has already been borrowed for the Broad Street Parkway, but is not needed at this point, to buy a parcel of land adjacent to Mine Falls Park. Now, as far as the public perception goes, this parcel, which is a large grassy area, is part of the park. And I don't think people quite understand that it's not part of the park. It seems It seems like it is, but it's not. It's owned by the Milliard Association. The proposal here is to buy that for various reasons. Number one, to make sure that, to make sure that the park is secured and maintained. Number two, yes, one of the purposes could be to put a dog park on part of the parcel. But third, it has been, become very clear that if the city does not buy this parcel, a developer or someone else will. They've already, they've tried to submit a competing bid. So if we did not go ahead, someone else would buy it, probably develop it, and we would be asked by many of our citizens, why in the world did you let someone develop part of Mine Falls Park? That would be the perception. So I think to enhance the, one of the gems of our park system, yes, to revive some land for a dog park, but also to just preserve the entrance to the park and the area around the park, this purchase is a good one. And one further point about that, the purchase, Madam Chair, Madam President, the, some people have said, well, it should be used for tax relief. Now, it cannot be used for that purpose. These are borrowed funds. You cannot use borrowed funds for operations or to reduce taxes like that. We will, we are projecting that we can use $4.5 million of surplus that we hope to generate for tax reduction, but this money is, cannot be used for that purpose. Has to be for a capital project, a purchase, or something else. Madam President, I wanted to mention, we've discussed City Hall before, City Hall is now open to the public. We are still maintaining some of the appointments, like some people have found that appointments at City Clerk and at vehicle registration are very helpful. So the appointment system, for those who wish to make appointments, is still in place, but City Hall is open, and all of the City Clerk's area still needs to be rebuilt, finished, and they need to be moved down from the third floor. We expect that should be accomplished sometime in the first half of July. I know everybody is aware of some sad news, and that is that former mayor, former Aldermanic President Don Davidson passed away. I wanted to extend my condolences to his family. He, in many ways, served the city on the Board of Aldermen, as president, as temporary mayor for a while, and he was elected as mayor, he served as a Chair of the Airport Authority, briefly on the Fire Commission. So he was truly dedicated to the city, and, you know, his, you know, his passing was certainly sad. Finally, Madam President, I wanted to mention maybe a happier event. We launched the Pride Celebration this week by raising the Pride flag. I know that Alderwoman Cleve, Alderwoman Schmidt were present, as well as other members of the delegation, the legislative delegation. In addition to that, we will be having the virtual Pride Celebration on June 26, again online. But because of the necessity of planning months in advance, things weren't clear where we would be with the pandemic in June, some months ago, we've scheduled a full Pride Parade for early in October. Again, that was done some months ago, just to make sure, in anticipation that by the fall, things would be a lot better with the pandemic. So I'm looking forward to the Pride Celebration. Everyone is welcome, both to the virtual event and ultimately to the live event. We are a city that values every one of our citizens. And that is all I have for tonight, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Responses to the remarks of Mayor. Alderman Lopez.
With regards to the circumstances that you discussed regarding both the implication, the implementation of legislation requiring us to have a spending cap, but then also deliberately singling us out for additional expenses, is the city taking any legal action against the, against anybody to try to reverse that, those?
Now, we were singled out when it came to the cap.
Okay.
But we were not, we are not singled out when it comes to the pensions. You know, this is affecting all cities and towns. The 13 mayors of the city got together and wrote, 13 mayors of 13 cities in New Hampshire. Republicans and Democrats got together and wrote to the governor and to the President of the Senate regarding the pension issues. We really didn't receive any response to either letter. The, so all of the cities and towns are being affected, just like we are. And, you know, it's just, it is sad that 80% of the money that we are putting in is to build up the assets of the, the state wants to build up its assets, that's what we're paying for. They messed things up, they made a mess of this, and we're bailing them out.
But if the state has specifically targeted our city for this kind of a regulation, is there any legal grounds for saying either you have to apply that to every city and community in that New Hampshire, or you can't single out Nashua specifically?
Now, for that, for that question, you would need to direct it to Steve Bolton, City Attorney.
I'm not expecting Attorney Bolton to give a, an opinion right now. I was just asking if this was being discussed at the city level.
We certainly are going, this just passed a couple days ago, or a few days ago, I think late last week, so yes, we're definitely going to discuss that issue.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Yes, a quick question, please.
Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Could, could I just have a little clarification of the, the decision on the cap?
By the state, you mean?
Yeah, could you expound a bit? I, I'm.
Well, maybe we could get some help from the legislators, they were very involved, but the, briefly, you know, the city never sought to invalidate the cap. A lawsuit was brought against the city, and the judge, and ultimately the Supreme Court, held that the city's, the city's cap does not, did not comply with state law, and therefore, because it didn't contain the kind of override provisions that are required by state law, and therefore invalidated it. And basically, the state law says, well, in the case of Nashua, and now they didn't mention us, but they defined us by date so that it's very clear that it, you know, applies to only one community, because only one community meets the criteria, the date criteria of when it was enacted and the like. It basically says, well, for Nashua, it doesn't matter. You know, the, all the other states have, all the other cities have to have the override, but, you know, even those years doesn't have it, that's, we're making it legal. Now, the, I think the legislators made the point that the citizens here could change that situation through various actions, but instead, the legislature stepped in and, you know, did it, and took away local control and just did it itself. Again, on a divided vote, party line vote, pretty much, but that's what happened.
Thank you. Could anyone identify the bill?
Senate Bill 52.
Thank you.
Steve Bolton, City Attorney, may be able to, probably can explain it better than I, but.
I could not explain it as briefly, Mr. Mayor. I can give an hour-long dissertation on the subject, but I don't think we have time this evening.
You all set? Alderwoman Lou?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't see anyone else. Okay. Recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings, there being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the regular and special Board of Aldermen meetings of May 25, 2021, and June 1, 2021. Be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communications have been received from Matthew Sullivan, Planning Manager, regarding the referral from the Board of Aldermen on proposed Resolution R-21139, authorizing the bus pull-off and shelter easement on Bridge Street and temporary construction easement and use easement agreement on Sanders Street, from Lori Wiltshire, President, Board of Aldermen, regarding calling a special Board of Aldermen meeting on July 1, 2021, relative to a public hearing on a petition for street layout 44 Buck Meadow Road, from Donna Graham, Legislative Affairs Manager, regarding communication received from the public, and from Tim Cummings, Economic Development Director, relative to discussion on continuation, the narrowing of Main Street.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. Period for public comment relative to items to be acted, expected to be acted upon this evening.
Lori Ordolano.
Lori Ordolano, please go ahead. Name an address for the record, and you have three minutes, please.
Okay, let me just set my timer so I know. Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I'm speaking in opposition to R-21145. I know it's bonded money, but I think we could do something else with it. Nashua is going to see about a 7% budget increase between 2021 and 2022, and in 2022, property owners are going to see their assessments reset to market value. I don't think property owners have any idea what they're facing. Vision is collecting recent sales data to develop a model, and they're gathering measure and list data to create a more accurate result. The measure and list, we know, depends on people opening their doors for an interior inspection. This is unlikely because the law doesn't require owners to do so. Updated homes with long-term owners and unpermitted work are not picked up. Sold homes that are updated are easy catches with MLS listings and photographs readily available. Equalizing sold versus unsold homes is almost impossible without interior inspections. This creates real challenges when determining an equitable tax distribution. Additionally, Vision is planning on changing how the depreciation is set on properties. The past approach to setting depreciation created some serious assessment disproportion in older neighborhoods. Vision has not been forthright on how this correction is going to take place. Another challenge in creating accurate assessments is determining the tax distribution between commercial and residential properties. There have been times when residential owners cried foul when its tax burden shifted sharply, placing heavier duty on residential properties. In 2018, KRT applied an income approach to value commercial properties and balanced the tax burden between commercial and residential. For 2022, Vision is collecting two years of commercial data and one year of residential data. The pandemic negatively impacted many businesses. How will this impact the model and tax burden distribution between business and residential properties? In 2018, the commercial property vacancy rate was only 4%. What about 2021? City leadership has not been willing to openly discuss or disclose Vision's observations with Nashua's businesses. Given the number of businesses that closed or saw lost income, it would be no surprise to see residential property owners bear a heavier burden as commercial assessments dropped. It's well-known that many residential property owners' assessments will be increasing, and they saw their personal incomes decline during the pandemic.
30 seconds.
Will increase because they're, it's based on sales, and it's a short supply, high demand market, prices are soaring. Before the mayor and Board of Aldermen vote on this park and increase, they should, and budget increase, we should make certain we all understand what's going to happen when Vision presses the Recalculate button. Let's have a candid discussion now about what the city expects it will be taking from the pockets of our citizens in 2022. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Pearlman.
Madam President, members of the board, good evening. My name is Andy Pearlman, attorney with Pruney and Pearlman here in Nashua. I am here to speak in favor of R-21139. I am here on behalf of Renaissance Nashua, a limited liability company, and we are finishing out the Bridge Street project that we've been working on for many years. Phase one of the project is completely built out. Phase one is on Bancroft Street and Bridge Street, right at the Hudson Bridge. It's 159 apartments that are fully leased out. Phase two of the project that we're working on now is located at the old John Mansville Manufacturing Site at Bridge Street and Sanders Street. We have three buildings that have been approved by the Planning Board that will total 177 apartments and some small commercial space. We have two easements in R-21139. The first one is a construction and use easement, and this is the exact same easement that this board approved in 2016 for Bancroft Street with phase one of the project. We, the contractor will be building out Sanders Street according to the plans from the sewer up to asphalt. And the second easement, city staff asked us along the way if we could provide a bus easement to the city for a future bus stop, and the answer is that we could. We have the room on the site to, along Bridge Street, to install a bus stop, a bus pull-off, which we will be doing, and we will be providing an easement to the city to have a future bus shelter and possibly bike racks, and to allow the buses to pull into the pull-off on the developer's property. We have the support of the Business and Industrial Development Authority, we have positive recommendations from the Planning Board and Infrastructure Committee, and I'm happy to answer any questions of the board, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to give public comment? Not seeing anyone. Okay. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication from Susan Kay Lovering, City Clerk, regarding Organization for Refugee and Immigrant Success ORIS, request to waive vendors' license fees.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to waive vendors' license fee for the Organization for Refugee and Immigrant Success ORIS by roll call, like to speak to it briefly.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, this is a, an organization that provides outstanding services to people that are resident here in Nashua when they're here, and the fee is $100, and the only people that can waive vendors' fees are the Board of Aldermen, that's why it's before us this evening.
Motion is for final passage. The motion is to waive the vendor license fees for the organization ORIS, Organization for Refugee and Immigrant Success, by roll call. Anyone else? Seeing none, will the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding Sewer Replacement Change Order Number Three in the amount of $1,300,000, funded from accounts 81700, infrastructure improvements, 169 wastewater.
Alderman Laws.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept, place on file, and approve Change Order Number Three to the 2020 Sewer Replacement Project with Sura Construction West Incorporated of Winchester, New Hampshire, for an amount not to exceed $1,300,000. Funding will be through Department 169 Wastewater Fund, bonded activities, sewer repair, by roll call.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none? The clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathroy.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donches regarding 2021 CIPP lining program in the amount of $1,990,745.39, funded from accounts 81700, infrastructure improvements, 169 wastewater.
Sorry, Alderman Cleve.
That's okay. I motion to accept, place on file, and approve the award of the construction contract for the 2021 SIP lining program. the 2021 SIP lining program to Green Mountain Pipeline Services LLC of Bethel, Vermont in the amount of $1,990,745.39. Pending bond approval, funding will be through Department 169 Wastewater Fund, Bond Activity, Sewer Rehab by roll call, please.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have 14 A's and zero N's.
That motion carries. Petitions.
There is none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
None.
Reports of committees. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the May 20, 2021 Budget Review Committee to be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the May 24, 2021 Budget Review Committee to be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the May 26, 2021 Committee on Infrastructure to be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the May 26, 2021 Budget Review Committee to be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the June 1, 2021 Budget Review Committee to be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the June 2, 2021 Penachuk Water Special Committee to be accepted and placed on file. And there being no objection, I will declare the report of the June 2, 2021 Finance Committee to be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
There are none.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of Resolution R. 21139, authorizing the bus pull-off and shelter easement on Bridge Street and temporary construction easement and use easement agreement on Sanders Street.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of Resolution 21139 by roll call, and I'd like to speak to that.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you very much. I only wanted to thank Mr. Pearlman for being here and giving us such an excellent description of what this is. Thank you very much. That's it.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have 14 A's and zero N's.
That motion carries. Resolution 21139 is declared duly adopted.
Thank you all very much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Second reading of Resolution R. 21141, authorizing the expenditure of up to $24,500 from the Conservation Fund for work on the Salmon Brook Trail.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of R. 21-141 by roll call, and I'd like to be heard on.
Alderman Jettie.
So I sponsored this resolution at the request of the Conservation Commission, to which I am the Aldermanic liaison. This is a project to restore the Salmon Brook Trail between, the section between Ingalls Street and Burke Street. It's part of the Joyce Park and Wildlife Sanctuary. It's $24,500. It's money that, it's not tax money, it's money that the Conservation Commission has in its Conservation Fund. This is money that's accumulated when developers develop property and need the Conservation Commission to review it, they have to pay a fee, and that money accumulates over the years, so this money is, is within the jurisdiction of the Conservation Fund, but they need our permission to spend it. They've come up with this great project. They're teaming up with Student Conservation Association, which has students during the summertime, you know, students who are interested in conservation. You know, they're going to provide crews that are going to do the labor involved in this project. They also supply tools and some materials, and we're also paying for part of the materials from the Conservation Fund. So it's a great project that's going to restore the trail in this very lovely conservation area along Salmon Brook, and the Budget Review Committee unanimously voted to recommend final passage, and I ask for your support.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution 21141. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have 14 A's and zero N's.
That motion carries, and Resolution 21141 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R. 21145, authorizing the inter-fund transfer of $325,000 from the Broad Street Parkway Capital Project Activity to the Nashville Milliard Dock Park Capital Project Activity for the purchase of property located at L. Pine Street, MAP 77, Lot 5.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion for final passage of R. 21-145 by roll call, and if I may speak briefly on my motion.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. Madam President, I think the mayor, in his opening remarks, spoke brilliantly on what's going on here, and any elongated comments from me would be wagging the dog. But the thing is, looking at this, I've always believed in my tenure as an Alderman, we have the business of running the city, but also the future. This is part of the Green Lake that runs right from the downtown, that goes into the Mines Falls area, and it's, I think, it would be a shame if we let it go, and it would be developed. I think the people of Nashua would probably be very happy with the $325,000 spent on this, and plus, given our four-footed friends a little bit of place inside the city, that they can go out and behave like good little puppies that they are. So therefore, I hope everybody goes with me and vote for this. I don't think we're barking up the wrong tree. Thank you, Madam President.
How do you top that? The motion is for final passage of Resolution 21145. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, Alderman O'Brien just took the role of the guy with the pun, so I'll restrain myself. But, well, the Animal Dog Park Advisory Committee has been working on this continuously for a year. I do feel the need to point out that it is because of their work that we have this opportunity. The opportunity isn't for just their work. I think it's important for us to take advantage of this for the reasons that Alderman O'Brien pointed out. I think the way that the Dog Park Advisory Committee has shed light on this particular land far exceeds the specific goal of a dog park. As the mayor pointed out, that's part of Mine Falls that a lot of people consider to be Mine Falls. It's their entry into that experience. The bike paddle run relies completely on that. There's any number of races and recreational events that rely on that exit point, and for it to be turned into a future parking lot or sold to a developer. There was a lot of shock when UPS took down a lot of trees near Mine Falls. People didn't realize that Mine Falls, beyond that border, those trees were actually on other people's properties. And then recently, it happened again, and we need to protect Mine Falls, and that means we need to buffer it as much as possible and create that natural green space that is available. And I think that's a more important consideration here, because that piece of land is a pretty good look, a pretty good asset for the city to grab with the opportunity we have, with the friendly relations that we have with the Milliard Association. We should take advantage of that. It's also potentially real estate that someone might be eyeballing because of its proximity to the Broad Street Parkway, so if we don't want to see Mine Falls whittled away, and we want to preserve it as the natural jewel that it is, we really need to take this into account, and we really need to take advantage of this opportunity. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Jettie.
Thank you, Madam President. I've received, you know, some feedback from constituents about this, about this matter, and, you know, I tried to explain it at the Budget Review Committee meeting. This, this resolution is not to purchase this land. This resolution, you know, we already voted to purchase the land at our last meeting. This resolution is, you know, to come up with the money that we already committed to pay for the purchase of this land. I voted against the last resolution to purchase the land, not because I think it's a bad project, I just felt that, that we were putting the cart before the horse. We had a public hearing, I thought we should wait for the public hearing and hear what the public had to say about this, but, you know, I was outvoted, and, you know, I think, you know, this is a, you know, the resolution that we adopted at the last meeting, you know, I think was, was a good one, that, even though I voted against it, because I think it's a very strategic purchase. It's, you know, our Director of Community Development, Sarah Marshon, spoke about how important it was to acquire this land. Director of Economic Development, Mr. Cummings, also spoke highly in favor of it. Our Capital Improvements Committee has put on this, this purchase of this land, they've given it the highest rating, an A1 rating. And, you know, the, you know, the dog park part of it hasn't even been decided yet, but even if, if it is used, it's only going to be a portion of this. It's over four acres, and the dog park, I think, is only going to, you know, if it comes to be, will only be about an acre. Also on this land, there's an antenna, and it's, it's an income-producing, you know, there's, there's a lease for that antenna that, you know, that currently, I think the rent is somewhere, it's over $25,000 a year. You know, so, when you, you know, so, so we've already committed to purchase this. The question is, where is the money going to come from? And the administration has identified surplus money from the Broad Street Parkway Project, you know, where this $325,000 is, is available. It's not new tax money. It doesn't affect the tax rate at all. Yes, I suppose, you know, during the discussion, I think CFO Griffin said that the $325,000 could be applied to the tax rate, you know, for one year. You know, what $325,000, you know, what effect that's going to have on the tax rate, I think is pretty, pretty, pretty small, and I think, you know, years from now, as others have pointed out, you know, this, I think that the city had an opportunity to buy this land for $325,000. You know, people are going to, if we don't do it, people are going to say, what, what could, what could you have been thinking? So I, I think it's, you know, the resolution we, we adopted at our last meeting to buy the land was a good one, and, you know, where do we come up with the $325,000? If it's not from this excess money that is not new tax money, it's going to come from somewhere else, you know, the general fund, and that will be tax money. That will affect the tax rate. You know, and it's, it's kind of, you know, I can't help but point out that we, we just voted to borrow over $3 million for sewer replacement and, you know, lining of the sewer pipes, very, very, very much-needed project, but, you know, we've, we've agreed to borrow over $300,000, over $3 million without a peep, you know, without anybody saying anything about it, and, and here we are, you know, people are upset because we're going to spend $325,000 of money we already have on this very worthwhile project. So I hope that my, you know, the people who have contacted me in opposition to this understand, you know, I've heard what you've said about it, but I think this is, you know, a, a smart thing for us to do, and so I'm going to vote for it. Thank you.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Thank you, Madam Chair. From what I understand, in the meeting that I did attend, the funding is coming from the Broad Street Project. One of the questions I had, I remember I asked the question as, in terms of portable housing, who purchased this property? Could we put housing on that? And I was told that the land was not that type of land that you could build property on, so, and I don't know exactly the details about it, but it wasn't a type of land that we could add, say, apartment building or something of that nature. So I, you know, I know the directors and capital improvement gave us great information, and I appreciate it, so I will be one to vote for this. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. Alderman Harriet Gathright, the land is actually in the flood plain, which means that it always, it has capacity to flood, so housing there would be a terrible mistake. Just a few points. Ward one has access to this wonderful park. We have parking there, we've got a bridge over the river, children can play in the fields nearby. It's wonderful. Wards three and four could have access to the park legally, have parking area, have a place for their dogs to play, place for runners to come and go, and, and if, if we don't do this, they won't have that. It will not be accessible to them. It will belong to somebody else, gates will go up, and people will not be allowed to go through there. I think wards three and four deserve the same kind of access to the park that ward one enjoys. I really hope everybody can vote for this, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
You're welcome. Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wasn't going to speak on this because I've spoken in nauseam about it, but I want to repeat some of the things that, that have been said, and I know Alderman Jettie, and I appreciated him bringing back the mayor's remarks of, if we don't purchase this now, and then later on, someone says, why not? We've heard that about Daniel Webster College, we've heard that about many other things, and the bottom line is, we can't please everybody. This is $325,000, and to me, $10 is a lot of money, but anything that we can do that's going to enhance this. I can tell you personally, as a person who uses the park regularly, that is one of my loops. I, I've mentioned it before, I go out of the park from that, that exit, through the Millard, and then back into the park. Without that exit, if someone were to gobble up that land and basically close off the park, that actually does have an effect, and I believe that... And I believe that Alderman O'Brien or one of the other Aldermen mentioned about the races, et cetera, that go on in through that. It would change the complexity. It would change the whole feel of this park. I think it's necessary. I think it would, we would literally have a close-off entrance there. I appreciate what Alderman Schmidt also said about this being an entrance to Ward four and Ward three. That is one of the entrances that I do use. And I often use the entrances from Ward one as well at Lincoln Park. I use the one over by Stella Stadiums in the Y. But this is the walking entrance for Ward four. This is extraordinarily important to maintain this and to not have someone put in a, whether it be gravel parking or whatever it would be, to close this end of Mines Falls. And then later on, we will have residents who'll turn around and say, it was only $325,000. I never liked that word "only," but that is what we're going to hear. So I'm going to be voting in favor of this. The dog park is an ancillary portion of it. We already had permission from the Mill Yard. So this is not the driving force to purchase this land. The Mill Yard had already given permission for the dog park. This is just purchasing the land because it's become available. The dog park is ancillary. And I really wish that it didn't have that name in it, but it does, and we just need to deal with it. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Having difficulty here with my video. Here we go. I just wanted to briefly, briefly comment that the dog park has been around since I, or the idea of having a dog park or the want to have more dog parks have been around since I've been on the board in 2008. And in addition to that, we as a city should keep improving and should keep improving the lives of our residents. And one of the ways to do that is to create new parks, new public spaces for people to enjoy. It's actually, in my opinion, a responsibility of our city government. So I believe that this is a worthwhile venture. I think that the dog park is a good idea. I think that there's going to be a lot of people who will utilize it and enjoy it. And, you know, I understand that, you know, the city is facing a lot of pressure from the state and that there's a lot of other spending priorities that need to happen. But we are a city that we need to look at everything. We need to be able to walk and chew gum at the same time. I think we're able to do that. I think this is a creative financing option for this, to make it happen. And I fully support it. I think it's the right thing to do. And I think that people will really like the fact that we did this five, 10, 15, 100 years from now.
Anyone else? Seeing none, the motion before us is for final passage of Resolution 21145. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulsier.
Yes.
You have 13 yeas and 0 nays.
And that motion carries. Resolution 21145 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R. 21146, authorizing Kennachuck Corporation and Kennachuck East Utility, Inc. to enter into a term loan with CoBank ACB.
Alderman Laws.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of R. 21146 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution 21146. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulsier.
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and 0 nays.
That motion carries. And Resolution 21146 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
President Mulsier, did you call for unfinished?
Yes.
Unfinished business ordinances? I did not hear that.
Okay. Yes, I did.
I still can't hear you.
You can't hear me?
Can't hear you.
I can't hear you. Can you hear her, Alderman Clemmons?
I cannot, no. So does this mean I'm in charge?
How about now?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of Ordinance O. 2162, establishing a handicap parking space in front of 3 Crown Street.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of 0-21-062 by roll call. And may I speak?
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. So the Corpus Christi Food Pantry is on Crown Street, and they reached it out to me because they do have a lot of handicapped people to see if we would be willing to put one handicap space for their clients who come in to the facility, which is maybe about three times a week for three or four hours. And I hope that we get final passage on this very important parking space for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion is for final passage of Ordinance 2162 by roll call. Is there further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulsier.
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and 0 nays.
That motion carries. And Ordinance 2162 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Ordinance O. 2163, establishing a no-parking zone on the south side of Newton Drive.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of Ordinance 21-063 by roll call. And may I speak on this?
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you. I just wanted to let everyone know that this is a request by DPW. There's a space that absolutely is required for them to turn their trucks around. And I appreciate your support on this.
Anyone else? Any discussion on that motion? No, seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulsier.
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and 0 nays.
That motion carries. And Ordinance 2163 is declared duly adopted. New business resolutions.
First reading of Resolution R. 21149, approving the use of U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Home Investment Partnership Program Funds by Neighbor Works of Southern New Hampshire for 40 Ash Street.
Are there additional sponsors? Alderman Cleve, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Karen, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Laws, Alderwoman Lou, Alderman Cleaver, and myself.
Harriet Gathright.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Thank you.
Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution R. 21150, amending the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Annual Action Plan for fiscal years 2021 and 2022 relative to the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleve, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Karen, Alderwoman Lou, Alderman Laws, Alderman Cleaver.
Harriet Gathright, sorry.
Alderman Harriet Gathright and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution R. 21151, relative to a ballot referendum concerning sports betting within the city of Nashua.
Additional sponsors: Alderman Cleve, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Laws, Alderman Cleaver, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee and schedule a special Board of Aldermen meeting on Tuesday, July 6, 2021, in the Aldemantic Chamber at 7:00 p.m. New business ordinances.
There is none.
Period for general public comment.
Laurie Ordolano.
Hello?
Okay, Laurie Ordolano.
Laurie Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I want to use this time to speak briefly about the Police Commission again and keeping the Commission the way it is appointed through the state. As most of you know, over the last couple of years, I've put in quite a few right-to-know requests. And they've been the center of a good bit of controversy. I want to let you know that I've put requests in at state agencies, top, you know, government bureaus and other municipalities. And what I find is, for all of those requests I've put in, I've received what I thought was a professional response. If my request wasn't clear, the agency or municipality would call. They would explain what information is available, allow me to express what I'm interested in, and provide the information. The Nashua Police Department has also operated that way. And although I might not be in full agreement on how they've handled some situations involving me, when it's come to my right-to-know requests, they have practiced the utmost courtesy. They pick up the phone, they call and ask for clarification, they explain what they have for data. And when I've asked questions in writing, the records department comes back with pretty long, lengthy explanations of what I'm looking for. City Hall, on the other hand, is the most oppressive, vindictive, and personal government I have ever worked with. They don't respond to right-to knows in the way that any state agency or other municipality does. They will not pick up the phone. They will not explain what records are available. They will not work with you to let you know what is available. You are playing a guessing game in Nashua and City Hall, and that's by design through a mayor and a legal office. It's obnoxious, it's crushing to citizens, it closes the door to transparency, it's oppressive. I am glad that the police department is operating like top governmental agencies in the state. And I don't want to see the appointments of these commissioners come from a mayor and a board president because I don't want them taking on the oppressive form of government that City Hall is practicing right now on their citizens. I want that police department to continue with its professional response to citizen requests. And the other issues that may exist that I may differ on can be worked on and improvements can come and will come with time. Thank you.
Anyone else? Beth, name an address for the record, please.
Yep. Hi. Yeah, Beth Scaire, 111 East Hobart Street. First of all, I wanted to correct the mayor. SB 52 was written by the sponsor, according to the sponsor, to protect every cap in the entire state, that's every city in town. And it specifically protects the spending caps in Nashua and the tax caps in Franklin, Laconia, Rochester, Manchester, Somersworth, Derry, and Dover. So the mayor is incorrect that SB 52 was written just to cause trouble for Nashua. And also, the spending cap didn't just drop out of the sky onto the mayor's head. It was passed by the voters of Nashua. And he's acting like it came out of nowhere and, you know, doesn't really apply to him and this Board of Aldermen. But the city residents voted for it, and it was never rescinded. And this bill just repairs what was broken by a previous bill. And also, for Pride Month, I wanted to let the mayor know that Save Women's Sports is still a very serious concern of mine. Took down my flag, and Alderman Schmidt helped them in that. I wanted to let them know that they, according to Mary Higgins in South Carolina, they now have full transgender cycling women's teams that go to these races. When girls line up, they're lining up with five men. Five men in a biking race. And those five men crush the women. This is what you, Alderman Schmidt and Mayor Donchus are supporting. And then from Beth Seltzer, founder of Save Women's Sports, she says, "These women call me a warrior for being in this spot today, and I gladly take that title because my words are my sword. The truth is my shield. And today, this room feels like a battle to protect reality. So forgive my sharpness of my sword. I would rather be rude than a liar. Despite death threats, I stand here today because there is great power in that truth. Simply put, identities don't play sports. Bodies play sports. Set a precedent that tells women and girls that they matter. We are women here saying no. Why is that not enough?" Thank you.
Alicia Houston.
Thank you so much. I want to appreciate the entire Board of Aldermen for taking a moment. Thank you so much. I want to appreciate the entire Board of Aldermen for taking a moment. I am at one-thirty-nine Westwood Drive in Nashua. I wanted to speak in opposition to the changes to the commission that are being suggested for our Nashua Police Department. I want to remind all of the Board of Aldermen that are here this evening that our police department is one of the most recognized and successful police departments with their training and all of the pieces that make them our Nashua Police Department, and that's recognized nationally. I just feel like if everyone could just take a moment and think that if it's not broken, why would we try to fix it? I don't see that adding additional commissioners to this is going to change anything. I see that the people that are the most qualified for these positions, and I'm saying this as a female, the people that are the most qualified for these positions should be the ones that receive these positions. I know that there's a lot of division in Nashua right now. And I would just, I would just welcome everyone to come together and look at what Nashua looks like right now, and let's focus on the areas of opportunity. And one of those areas of opportunity is not the police commission. Let's leave them the way that they are, and let's let them continue to protect and serve our city. Thank you.
Stephen Scaire.
Hi, I'm Stephen Scaire, one-eleven East Tobart Street. Since this is June, I wanted to ask the city to consider honoring fathers for Father's Day. May was Mental Health Awareness Day, and we know that fatherlessness is a leading cause of mental health disorders in children. We know that children who don't have their dads at home are twice as likely to commit suicide, thirty-two times as likely to run away from home, nine times as likely to drop out of school, twenty times as likely to exhibit symptoms of mental health behavioral disorders, ten times as likely to end up in a chemical abuse center, more likely to face abuse neglect at home, and four times as likely to live in poverty. I appreciate everything the city and the state does for young people suffering from mental health problems, but no amount of money spent on extra hospital beds for the state or therapists or online therapies can ever compensate for the crisis of not having your dad at home. Four out of ten children right now are being born out of wedlock, and black communities have been especially hard hit, as Barack Obama noted in two thousand and eight, with now seven out of ten black children being born out of wedlock. What real social justice would mean is providing each child with his or her dad in the home, and nothing else makes up for that. So with so many children suffering from not having fathers at home, I'd ask that this board considering honoring the fathers who've stood through the trials and temptations of being a modern dad to raise their own children by recognizing Father's Day. President Obama said that what makes you a man is not the ability to make a child, but the ability to raise a child. Fatherhood is an unappreciated job. Fathers are often derided. And Nashua owes a debt of gratitude to those men who are stepping up and raising their own children. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see anyone else from the public looking to speak, so remarks by members of the board. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I wasn't really going to mention it too much because, quite frankly, I'm still trying to digest. But as many of the people at home know, the other political hat that I wear is I'm a state representative. And despite what some people may think, please allow me to tell you what I know. I was there, and I was able to give the floor speech. This thing with the tax cap, there was something about it that did not have an override position in it. It was discovered in the court case. And instead of fixing the city charter, what we had when those particular people lost their court case, they brought the issue via the Senate into the, you know, to be heard, and then it came into the House where it was vetted. But when it came to the floor, we did make a motion to table it, and it came up one-eighty to one-eighty to table, and the Speaker basically came up and voted on the side because it was a tide, which would have probably delayed the bill. And it would have, he voted in favor and the bill passed. What I have an issue with, this is a bill that solely bullseyed Nashua. Nobody else, no other communities. They all have override positions in their charter. Nashua does not. This is somebody showing up to the construction site and repairing something you didn't pay for. Now, I see it's nothing but, I think, partisan politics. I often wonder about these people that fly the yellow flag, the glass and flag that says, "Don't tread on me", but yet to come up the whole state of New Hampshire to vote on what we want to do here with our charter. To me, the municipal charter is a very sacred government. We follow it underneath my desk here and next to my seatmate. We do have it, and we try to run our, you know, government by it. But it's sad when there's a right way, and that is going out and getting fifteen hundred signatures or an alderman of this board to sponsor it to make a referendum change, instead of running up to the legislature and changing it in a very backdoor type of manner. So like I say, I'll leave it at that. I am very disgusted. It has to go down. In my fourteen years in the State House, a one of the most disgusting things, very rarely in the House of Representatives. It's a little like herding cats. But when you have four hundred representatives, but to have a tie like that and to have the speaker break a tie is extremely rare. And to do it on the side of politics or partisan means, it was greatly disappointing. And again, I think I'm very proud. All twenty-seven Nashua representatives that the people of Nashua elected to speak their voice in the State House did not support this measure. And not one Nashua representative duly elected by the citizens of Nashua did not, did not support this or were never asked to even sponsor this. So again, totally disgusted. From time to time, we see that up there. I'm still, again, trying to digest it, and hopefully at a later date, probably will feel better about it. But right now, it was a very shameful moment for bipartisan politics and running the state when the great state of New Hampshire has to put on the boxing gloves and go after one particular city, the city of Nashua. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Cle?
Thank you, Madam President, and I have to correct a couple of statements that Alderman O'Brien and State Rep. O'Brien made. The actual vote was one-eighty-six
Who cares about a number?
To one-eighty-five, no. And there was not a tie at the beginning. The Speaker actually created the tie.
He created the tie, yes.
To make it to one-eighty-six to one-eighty-six, which is absolutely unheard of.
Unheard of.
By creating the tie, the table went down, and it went on to ought to pass. That was a division vote. So for all of those that are listening, that was a division vote. That was a nonpartisan vote. That meant Republicans, Democrats voted to do the table. They continued on with ought to pass and various other things, including reconsideration. Each time, they didn't call for a division, they called for a roll call. They called for a roll call to bully certain individuals into voting the way they wanted to. And this is proof positive. When the Speaker created the tie and it went down, the next vote that went on went to do exactly what they said because they were determined they were going to win. And for those people who do not think this was for Nashua, read the bill, notice who it points out by stating all up beyond this date. That was Nashua and only Nashua. They put in a paragraph about supermajority. And for complete transparency, this is my committee that heard this. Municipal, county, government heard this particular vote. It was very specific. If you listen to the audio, you hear Nashua, Nashua, Nashua. At one point, someone finally does turn around and say, "Well, you know, others were at risk, others were not at risk." Because if you go in and you look at it, they're, they're absolutely not at risk because they do not have the same issues. What this did was, this said to Nashua, "You will put in a spending cap. You will not have an override." Because we don't have an override. We have two excludable items. This means that if the city were to get a grant that would bring us over the spending cap, we could not take that grant. This would not hurt the taxpayers, but we could not spend that money. That's what this does. This is basically saying to Nashua, "We don't care if you're going to raise the taxes. You can't spend that money. It's a three-year running average." So for those people who say this was to affect other Franklin, et cetera, et cetera, no, it's not. It was significantly put towards Nashua. And anybody who doesn't believe it, read it. Read it, listen to the speaking points that were made. I, along with, I'm sure, my other twenty-six other reps, were quite alarmed by this. I have never seen one community targeted. And my committee, over and over and over again, said the state was not meant to fix what the citizens felt was wrong with the city. It should not have been fixed and conquered. It should have been fixed here in Nashua. There are ways of fixing it. So I'm sorry for going on so long, but I did decide I needed to clarify that. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, just two quick things. One, I would like to request that if we can get the people that are responsible for the pension fund in the state down here to talk to us. It's my understanding that they earned less on the pension funds this year than you could earn in a savings account. That's ridiculous. And the way that they're running it is not conducive to any city and town in New Hampshire, and it's not just cities, it's also towns. So I'd like to have them down here and answer some questions. The other thing is, I do want to express my condolences on the loss of former Mayor Don Davidson. I knew Don for a number of years. We didn't always agree, but we agreed to disagree. He was a pilot with Eastern Airlines. He owned a fixed base operator establishment at the Nashua Airport when I was chairman of the Airport Authority. He was an alderman, president of the Board of Aldermen, a mayor, and also on the fire commissions. So, like I said, we didn't always agree on things, but I'm sorry to hear of his passing.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. I too would like to extend my condolences to the Davidson's family in the loss of Don. Mayor Davidson, I worked with him. It could be contentious at times, but he's the one that brought in the Nashua Pride to Holman Stadium, which started that ballpark to come alive again after so much time with nothing going on there. Also, he, as we were talking the other day, Commissioner Tolner and I, when there was this big controversy about taking away the recreation basketball program within the city, this room was filled to capacity with, with parents, children, and everyone coming out. And Mayor Davidson realized that this wasn't the way to go and, and kind of backed off. And I have to say that I was very proud that he realized that a mistake was made and rectified it. So I think that, that tells you what kind of a person he is. And as Alderman Dowd says, you don't always have to agree, but sometimes you can make the corrections that you need to and compromise. So I always, I always chuckle about that one. Hopefully, we never have to see that again. Thank you.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
It's been a while since I put my hand up, but I just want to say that ditto to Alderman O'Brien, but even more so to Alderman Cle because that's exactly what I wanted to say, that we did not have a tie. We actually would have, you know, stopped that bill had it not been for our Speaker. And that's important because typically, that doesn't happen. I don't think in my three terms I've ever seen that happen, what he did. Because that was a downright out partisan-type situation. It was nonpartisan, but he made it partisan. So that's all I need to say. Thank you.
You're welcome. Alderman Cleaver.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to say a good word for our city employees now that COVID is being mitigated and things are opening back up. City Hall is open and so on and so forth. I would like to thank all the City Hall workers, all the city employees generally for all the great work they've done through COVID, through all the heartaches and difficulties that that created. And they have done a fantastic job. Well, before I got into government, either state or local, I recognized that our City Hall was outstanding. Our present mayor was mayor before and has always presented a very good administration. They do a fantastic job, and each one is to be congratulated. They're underappreciated, as many government employees are. But I would like to thank them, both from myself and for the board, for all the work they've done. Thank you.
You're welcome. Alderman Tudy.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to commend you and Alderman Karen for scheduling the the public hearing on the issue of of the referendum question about the police commissioners. Lots of times, we have, we have public hearings, and then we have a committee hearing immediately thereafter. And I've always felt that it didn't really give a chance for us to, you know, really digest what the public had to say during the public hearing before we were called upon to vote on it in committee. This time, you know, the public hearing was scheduled. Many people appeared and expressed their opinion. I found it very informative on both sides of the issue. And now it's going to go, you know, not that same night, but, you know, sometime in the coming weeks, the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee chaired by Alderman Karen is is going to consider it and make a recommendation, and then and then some point after that, the full board would vote on it. And I think that's, I appreciate that because it gives us a chance to have a full discussion, a full debate. And I want to remind people that what is before us, this resolution is not is not to change anything at this point. The resolution is to put on the ballot the question about whether or not the voters think that, that the way we select commissioners, the police commissioners, should be changed. So, you know, I don't know, you know, how I'm going to vote on this. But if it, if it does pass, all it does is, is it puts it on the ballot, and then, you know, a full debate will occur. And then the voters will decide whether, whether any change is warranted or not. And I think that a lot of people are under the mistaken impression that we are, that this resolution is affecting that change right away. It would just put it on the ballot and allow the voters to decide. And there's people who are against it, who want it to stay the same, you know, feel that, that there should be no question and it shouldn't even be on the ballot. And, you know, but I just wanted to clarify, and I wanted to thank you, Madam President, and Alderman Karen, for arranging, you know, a for this debate to occur over several meetings. And thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to give my condolences to the Davidson family tonight. Don Davidson was mayor in the nineties when I was a teenager in Nashua. And he actually inspired me to get involved in city politics, but not in the way that you might think. He, I was actually very against Mayor Davidson and some of the things that he proposed in his first two years in office and some of the crazy things he did. But I learned a lesson from Mayor Davidson. And that is that people can change, and people can, if you listen to your constituents, you can govern better. Because Mayor Davidson, in the second two years of his term, was a fine mayor, a very good mayor, somebody that I agreed with, somebody who, you know, worked with the people of Nashua and worked with the, you know, the legislature and other groups in the state to try to make Nashua a better place. And in fact, we were named the number-one city in the country for a second time under Mayor Davidson. And, you know, when he was recalled, you know, I supported him in the recall. you know, I supported him in the recall and I supported him in his reelection campaign, which he did not ultimately win in 1999. But I think his legacy here in the city, you can see it everywhere. Whether you're traveling down Kinsley Street or West Hollis Street, you change those streets the one ways. There are major thoroughfares in the city. You know, now, when you go down to the Maplewood area, we often call that Captain's Corner, which was named after his convenience store, which was there. You know, Mayor Davidson will always hold a place in Nashua. He served the public very well, and his family should be proud. And I was proud to be a supporter of his, to come around and be a supporter of his. So thank you very much.
Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to address just some concerns about unsealing minutes. There have been a lot of requests by Nashua residents for sealed minutes to be unsealed when appropriate. I've heard a great deal of concern, particularly regarding the assessing department minutes. And it doesn't seem that they're being unsealed when qualifying reasons cited for sealing them no longer apply. And residents are asking for them to be unsealed. I understand that we seal minutes because they involve discussions of settlement proposals. And that's an excellent reason to seal minutes. But it would seem to me that once the settlement is made, unless there are qualifying reasons that remain, that we would unseal these minutes as a matter of course. I understand the rationale for not unsealing the minutes is that in the assessing department is that the settlements that are under discussion become publicly available. But I don't agree that this is the same as unsealing the contemporaneous minutes of the meeting. I feel that true transparency would involve unsealing the records when the reason for sealing no longer exists, to allow the public a view of how decisions are made by our officials. And so to the chairmans of the committees, I'm requesting that the use of a non-public session be viewed as a temporary means to keep sensitive information quiet while it can damage reputations or to keep negotiations effective. But in the interest of some people who are asking and for the rights of all of the city of Nashua residents, that those rights and interests be kept in mind when weighing how much priority is given to unsealing the minutes in a timely manner. Thank you.
You're welcome. Committee announcements.
Madam President.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Lopez. You're up.
I waited for 14 people. Sorry. I wanted to start by expressing my condolences to Melbourne Moran, state representative, on the passing of his father. Recently, his father passed away due to COVID-19. So I wanted to express my condolences to him and his family and those who knew his father. I wanted to extend my condolences to the family and friends of the recently deceased Mayor Davis. And then I also wanted to comment a little bit on the spending cap issue, too. Those state issues, those bipartisan back and forths, are why I really, I dislike the intrusion of partisan politics into local issues. As local aldermen, we represent our wards, just our wards, and our fidelity needs to be to the people that we are elected to serve. And I feel like bipartisan politics can definitely take the focus off of the issue and have people start playing larger games that removes the public from the decision-making. And I think for the entire Nashua delegation to vote against something that would impact Nashua, but for a larger-than-them group to vote in favor of something that impacts Nashua on party lines is detestable. It definitely gives me pause when we consider things like the appointment of police commissioners. Because while we certainly have good commissioners at this point, I don't want to see the day come where the Police Department is weaponized against us for political purposes. I was in a discussion today where someone accused Mayor Craig of dislocating a group of homeless people because she was running for office. And that's not the case. There's accountability and there's chains. But if it were a circumstance like that that had happened in Nashua, I would want our constituents to be able to take action. So I personally am very closely, I'm very conflicted over the actual decision over whether we should change the police commissioner or not. But I think it's becoming more and more clear to me that it will be a political issue unless we make it a referendum. I have been outreach by a lot of people who are opposed to it, who do not live in Ward 4, a number of whom do not even live in Nashua. And they're expressing their opposition while asking me not to politicize it. I feel like it's been politicized when somebody who does not live in the area and is not directly engaged in that situation or when their experiences with the police are much more visceral and profound than, you know, going to their administrative office and being impressed with their ability to provide right to know. That's not the experience that a lot of local Ward 4 residents experience with the police. That's not a lot of the work that's going on here. Police are seen sometimes as the first contact is when a police officer might arrest a family member. And we have a lot of programs in place in the community to create a positive experience, like the Nashville Power Program, like the NERD Program, National Economic Racial Disparity. The police work very hard to manage their impact in the community in a positive way in Ward 4. And that's recognized. That's not political. That's a consequence of being in a community and doing community policing. So I think there's an assumption here, possibly a political one, that if this goes to Nashua constituents, they'll be uninformed, they'll be ignorant, they won't come up with the right decision. And I think that's when people start to use politics. That's when people who are not in a specific area or directly impacted by something see it as part of a larger strategic goal. And I caution against that kind of thinking. Like I said, there's still a lot more discussion to be had on even the ordinance that we have right now, which would put it in referendum. But I'm starting to think that this is not a decision that Concord should be making because if Concord's going to make decisions about our spending cap in this particular manner, that's not doing it for the right reasons. I will also point out that, this is my third term as alderman, no one has ever approached me about repairing the spending cap. We are authorized as aldermen to at least propose the ordinance or the amendments to those ordinances that would do that. And no one has brought it up. No one has even asked for it to be put on the table for discussion. So there was never even a discussion here or the debate or any of that kind of thing, which robs Nashua constituents and residents of that opportunity. Because they saw no public hearings, no public comment, no in-Nashua or nationally managed conversations. They, at best, would have had to be following all the state exercises that happened. And they, at best, would have had their voices divided 400 times by the other state representatives, which is unfortunate. So I think election season is coming up for many of us. I hope we're able to keep things focused on local issues and not partisanship and not, you know, larger political parties. Onto some more positive note. We were talking about different past mayors. The mural in Le Parc de Notre Renaissance Française is underway. It's being painted. One of the faces that the Richelieu Club nominated to be put on as a person of Franco-Nashuan descent who has contributed to the community is Mayor Lozo. So I hope people will stop, take a look at that. If they're interested in supporting or sponsoring the project, it can be found by going to www.involvetoimpact.org. And if you're interested in participating in the Tree Streets Block Party, that is going to be on June 26 on Ash Street as well. Some of the aldermen might recognize the address as containing the house that we are looking at supporting neighbor works revitalizing. So there's a lot of positive things that are going on. If anybody's interested in putting up their, in sponsoring any events at the block party or getting involved in the more local issues that affect people in the Tree Streets, then feel free to come by. You're all welcome. So that's June 26. And if you want more information, you can find it at www.involvetoimpact. That's T-O-I-P-A-C-T dot org. Thank you.
You're welcome. I too would like to send my condolences to the family of Don Davidson. Enough has been said this evening. He was a good mayor. He was a good person. So my condolences to his family. Committee announcements. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, we have two more budget meetings this week, Wednesday and Thursday at 7:00. They're going to be conducted here in the chamber, but public can access via Zoom. We're still into the governor's order. On Wednesday, it's going to be community development. And on Thursday, it's going to be education. Two very serious budget areas. So I hope that everybody will participate.
Any other committee announcements? Seeing none? Alderman O'Brien, do you have a motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion that the June 28th as June 8, 2021, meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
The motion is to adjourn by roll call. The clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tanza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jerry.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Your 14 a's and 0 nays.
That motion carries, and we are adjourned at 9:23 PM. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.